Could be worse, could've been undergone.
Should probably turn my sound off here.
I'd rather have it on.
Otherwise I'll get one of those. Calls that, you know.
Yep.
No reason to talk to me.
Don't forget to get your comment card in. Yeah.
I think you should fill one out just in case.
He's gonna say she didn't talk to me.
Is yours first?
Nope, wasn't here, still didn't look.
By the way, she looks timed, not ideal. Just gonna plan out, tell you that. Yeah, thank you, Victoria.
Well, I'll be honest, I didn't hear back from several of you on what would work best for you.
These don't work, we all have jobs.
So, so I said, no, I mean, as to what your preferences would be, I only heard from.
But even that, it's still hard, yeah.
But I sent it to her and then these are the times she's like, well, this is what I can make work with that. I'm like, okay, I'll send it out and see if it'll work for anybody.
The only reason I picked out like a Friday afternoon was because I used to get half days, but now that fall is here, the half day schedule for summers on Fridays is done, so even then I would have to take half a day work off, so.
Well, I've only heard, I think, from three so far, so if people can take a peek.
I was, I was one of them, right?
I heard from Missy Victoria and Terry, I believe.
I replied.
No, I think that's the key. For the strategic plan. Not the.
The second one, that's two days.
I don't think I got that either. Oh. Um, I had to go search for my trash, but that's because Gmail sends everything to my trash.
The trash?
It's okay.
They're not ideal.
It's the famous for the strategic plan, not the, not the, um, not the, um, meeting for the workshop.
The council retreats?
Josh?
Right, the council retreat now.
He had an emergency.
Strategic plans, or, oh, that's sorry, so it's sked, uh, it was from Thursday to twenty eighth.
Yeah.
So if anybody didn't get a chance to, so it's you, you and Victoria, so anybody else? Take a peek and let me know if I need those.
I don't like any of them, so tell me when I have to be there. Hashtag, sorry.
What about ten sixteen, five to eight, and ten twenty-three, five to eight?
Oh, see that one?
Those were just the other. But it's only, that's only one chunk, then the second chunk, see, I didn't get that.
That's because I'm piecing two different chunks together.
Yeah, yeah, exactly.
Because she gives us that as an option.
I think that's what I did too, I, you know, like this works and this works, except that I scrolled down. Oh, no, it wasn't the choices.
I did not get that.
So we're talking the sixteenth, seventeenth, or twenty-third, twenty-fourth?
On the specific dates to choose, yeah.
No.
Oh, no.
Okay.
But if we did the sixteenth and the twenty-third, I don't know why that would make a difference. She's giving them to us as options anyway.
My, my reply was, I can only do five to eight, otherwise it will be after one thirty.
What are the eight? Gonna be well after one thirty, too.
Okay, I'll be, I'll resubmit that, Missy. I pop, you're on the list, I'm sure, so I don't know.
It might have been like, no, she was in.
All right.
Terry sent hers from the trash.
Yeah.
I'll call this meeting to order of the committee of the whole, September second, twenty twenty-five, seven P M. Can I have a roll call, please?
Boike.
Here.
Stubby.
Here.
Ill.
Here.
Nigbur.
Absent.
Frisball.
Here.
Sorenson.
Here.
You have five.
Okay. We have no virtual attendees. Any public comments? No one? Number four then, approval of minutes?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from August five to twenty twenty-five, committee of the whole meeting.
I'll second that. Motion and a second, all in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion passes. Onto number five, email conversion to cloud-based system versus in-house server. Uh, recommendation is recommend approval of quote from Corporate Network Solutions to implement Microsoft three sixty-five email services.
So included within your packet is the quote, um, as well as just a brief explanation. We've been dealing with, um, email issues for some time now where emails are not necessarily getting through to the intended recipient. Um, more, from what I understand, due to their email, companies, host, whatever, uh, requiring more specificity, specificity, sorry, more information from us in order to accept those emails, partly because we've been labeled a bulk emailer. Uh, we send out a lot of email, especially with, you know, utility bills, things like that. So, um, this would allow the patches and stuff that we've been, have been tried or not, um, a hundred percent. And then, as you know, there was a massive outage, uh, for internet and everything over a week, over a weekend with a storm, and it took us quite some time to get our email back up to recover our server and be able to get that running even after internet was restored. So, um, we had been working on trying to figure out how best to move forward and get this quote together prior to that, but it just really reiterated that we really need to have reliable email. So, um, we have a representative from Corporate Network Solutions, if you have any questions regarding this. I do know that, um, it has been suggested that the school uses Google, and I asked them to look into that. Um, that service is free for the school, it is not for governments, it's not free for governments, sorry, to clarify. So if anyone has questions or concerns, I'll turn it over to, to them.
Can you, can you come up to the podium, please? Thank you.
Do you have any questions before I start?
I just had one question as it regards scalability. Um, it mentions that you can easily scale it up or down as the business changes needed. What is the, um, what are the layers of scalability? Like, do you have to be over a hundred, a thousand people? Like, at what point does it change?
I guess I'm not sure I understand the question.
Um, the monthly cost is based on scalability.
Oh, yes, and I don't know exactly what the number is, but, uh, with the size of your organization, um, it's gonna be some time before you get a discount on licensing. So, um, I wouldn't count on getting a discount based on, on the scale of your organization. You're talking hundreds of, of client licenses before that really applies.
So that just effectively removes that as a benefit for us?
Yeah.
Okay.
It, it does.
It, but the, our total cost is based on the number of users and the number of PCs versus, um, supporting, having the, um, the server, if that makes sense.
Did you have a, did you look into the price for switching to Google through the government?
I have not, um, I have not personally, I don't really handle the money, I'm more technical. Um, I don't do any quoting or anything like that in my position at the company. Uh, Todd would have been the better person to be here for this, for that purpose.
Okay.
Um, but unfortunately, he's, um, out of town at the moment, so I'm standing in for him, and, uh, I can answer, I can certainly answer technical questions about, um, Microsoft three sixty-five and what that conversion process looks like. Um, and I can speak a little bit to the differences between, uh, Microsoft three sixty-five and Google and what the advantages and disadvantages that I see of each are. Certainly, from my perspective, um, I see two main advantages to the city in sticking with Microsoft and going with the Microsoft three sixty-five. The first of which is simply familiarity with the product. It's what you've been using for more than a decade. Um, the, the only difference is that the service is gonna be hosted by Microsoft instead of hosted and maintained by the city and, and, and your agents, namely us. So that takes the, the burden of responsibility for doing patching and maintenance off you, just like moving to Google would. It's the same thing. But the, um, but the product itself is gonna look and function essentially identically to what you're using now is, as far as the end users are concerned. So there's no learning curve. The other advantage to going to Microsoft three sixty-five, the other really big advantage to going to Microsoft three sixty-five is the availability of actually speaking to a human being if you have a problem. When I, um, experience problems with Microsoft services, um, in particular with, uh, Microsoft three sixty-five email service or SharePoint, if I need assistance, um, setting somebody up, or if there's, uh, um, or if there's any kind of a technical glitch that I encounter, I can actually speak to a live human being with Microsoft. I have never heard of anyone using any Google service that's reported that same level of service.
Does anybody else have any other questions? I, I, I was, um, pretty firm in pushing to at least explore Google, just because I know, um, the capabilities we have within the school district and having hundreds of students and teachers and staff that are already using it. Um, and I see daily what the advantages are of it, and so I didn't wanna, um, exclude that completely.
Is that something that we can request? Is that something they can give us a quote on or not?
We would have, I don't know, we're just going through Google or if they're able to, or is it something that they're even willing to entertain the idea of Google, or are we just getting, we can't help you if you go to Google, kinda?
We have customers that we have continued to maintain after they go to Google, but at that point, they're maintaining it on their own. We, we don't really help with Google. If you, if you make that, that choice to go to Google, um, then we are essentially going to, um.
Can you give some examples of when you say maintaining? So what would be some, um, examples that we would have to maintain on our own versus something you would do with Microsoft?
If you had to, um, change your level of subscription, for instance, let's say you had to, um, add more storage, um, it would be up to you to go through that process to, um, to add the additional storage or the additional licensing, or whatever it was that you had to do through Google in order to make those changes. If you added users or, or, um, or rank and, uh, needed to trim licenses off, or if you needed to, um, or if you needed to terminate employees or that kind of thing, or, you know, all those kinds of changes. Um, let's say you suffered some kind of a breach and needed assistance with that. Um, if you went to, if you went to G Suite, um, we wouldn't be able to help you with it. We are simply not familiar with, enough with it as a company, with its use in order to, um, adequately support you professionally if you go that route.
In your.
And we have, and, and we have actually stepped away from other customers who have, who have done that against our advice, um, who, who continued to want us to support them, um, but we're, it's outside of our comfort zone is what I would say.
In the paragraph that talks about the benefits that you claim that the Microsoft three sixty-five cloud offers, you, um, cite improved security and cost savings. Um, can you talk a little bit about what those cost savings are and what the improved security over, say, Google would be?
Sure, like, as far as cost savings, I'm not sure I can really speak to that. As I, as I mentioned before, I don't deal a lot with, uh, with prices. I have, I came prepared with, uh, with some of the costs of what we offer are, um, so I can speak to that a little bit. I, as far as the cost savings over Google, I couldn't really speak to that because I don't know Google pricing. What I could speak to, though, is the security enhancements of Microsoft three sixty-five. Certainly, um, it goes above and beyond what you have now. Um, Microsoft is gonna be ending support for your Microsoft Exchange Server this October, um, and that kind of forces your hand. There, they are offering an extended support option now that they sent out an email about at the last minute. But you're, you would be paying for support for six months, so you'd get six months worth of patches, you know? And you could forego that money and, um, start down the migration path and your money would be better spent. So, um, as far as the security enhancements that Microsoft three sixty-five offers, it offers, uh, G O I P tracking for login requests built into the interface. We can see when people attempt to log into Microsoft three sixty-five, to any of their services, whether it's the administration console, whether it's a remote shell, you can even see the difference between a, um, between an interactive login where somebody must be actually sitting at a device or at a computer and a, and a scripted login using their, um, advanced programming interfaces. So those are, um, some of the big advantages. Also, it comes with, uh, with two-factor authentication built into it. It's built into the interface, which it is not built into the interface of your Microsoft Exchange Server. Google also supports two-factor authentication, I can say that confidently. And it's highly recommended to have that in both scenarios, whether you go to Google or whether you go to Microsoft three sixty-five. And Microsoft is actually forcing that on you at the moment. They're rolling out, uh, a security enhancement that is going to demand that every user set up two-factor authentication, whether they want to or not.
And does, does your team handle the migration and.
Yes.
Re-education for as, as far as use, or is that a piece that they just have to poke?
Well, like I said, as far as re-education, there wouldn't be any, any change to, um, if you stay with the, the Microsoft, um, product, there's no education to be, to be had because it's the same product.
Except it's a, well, you'll have a separate login process, right?
No. No.
For cloud-based?
Uh, you're, initially, yes, we'll help you log in, but there's like one login, and then that's it. You're, you, you log in to download the product and install it and authenticate against their cloud, and then that's it, you don't have to log in anymore. But now, if you wanted to log into your webmail and check your webmail while you're out of the office or something like that, we can show you how to do that, yeah.
Any other questions? Comments, anybody?
I, I guess my only question is, um, for the mayor, you mentioned that you wanted to take a look at Google, but I don't see Google offered as a comparative here. Is that something that we're gonna see later, or are you looking for an approval of this without the comparative?
The comparative, we'd have to figure out how to bring that to you. Our current provider does not offer Google.
Okay.
My understanding was that there was gonna be someone else here tonight who was gonna speak to that.
To Google?
Yeah, exactly. That's what Todd had told me, is that he thought there was gonna be someone else here from the school district or something who was gonna speak on Google's behalf.
No, no.
Oh, okay.
No, I let him know that that's what the school district uses, so there was some familiarity and we liked to understand, you know, what, kinda what the difference is, but.
Gotcha.
For Jesse, how comfortable is the staff with this, um, conversion?
I, I don't think staff, um, has concerns. Um, currently, the police department has moved to this already, um, due to, oh, sorry, I think due to security issues and whatnot. I wanna say it was like the Marches timeframe, and they haven't had any, any issues with it. So we're not anticipating any, any problems with moving forward with it. It goes from needing to replace the server and figure out, um, how we're gonna continue to patch things to it becoming a subscription, so this would be an annual fee that we would pay depending on the number of PCs we are using and the number of users beyond those PCs. But with it would come the Microsoft theme at its newest version. Uh, but once all, so, all PCs that are compatible with the three sixty-five, we would continue, um, with that version of Microsoft, because it doesn't make sense to pay to update when it's compatible. But once they got to the point where it's no longer compatible, then they would automatically bound that subscription and they would get to the most updated version of the Microsoft suite automatically with the three sixty-five, is my understanding. So everybody, in a couple of years, would all be on the, the exact same system. If that makes sense.
Well, in lieu of seeing any, um, other quote, then I would make a motion to approve the quote from Corporate Network Solutions to implement the three sixty-five email services.
Is a recommendation to the council to approve?
Recommendation to common council, sorry.
I'll second that. Motion, excuse me, motion and a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Number six um, is October first, twenty twenty-five to September thirtieth, twenty twenty-six, employee health insurance and employee dental insurance provider determination and plan selection. The recommendation is to approve provider plan selection and employee contribution for employer, city of Berlin, provided health insurance and dental insurance.
So within your packet, um, Visance went out and got us some quotes to match what we currently, um, have through W P S. We did get two other companies, but didn't really consider those to be competitive. So within this packet here, you see Robin, um, and W P S, which is our, our current vendor. So as proposed, what, um, staff has shown here is there are actually three different networks that Robin supports, Broad, Focus, and Select. And what we are suggesting potentially is to offer both the Broad and the Focus. The Broad is a slight decrease in what we are currently paying this year, um, comparison, and the Focus group is, um, and, or the Focus network is an even greater, uh, is cost savings. The reason, um, that we're proposing kinda doing it as a dual is that we don't anticipate, we can't say one hundred percent for sure, but we don't anticipate that if we moved to the Broad network, that there would be much disruption at all, um, where, uh, it looks like people could continue with the facilities and doctors that they have now. Can't say that with a hundred percent certainty, but that's what it looks like. And a good chunk of our employees would, um, not see any trouble either if they move to Focus. However, there would be some disruption at the Focus. So if we allowed, um, the employee to choose, we could generate some cost savings for both the city and the employees that chose that Focus over, over the Broad, but we would continue to be offering, um, services that they are currently experiencing. Um, if you have any questions on any of this, please, we have people in the audience who are, are here to help. Within the memo where I'm explaining things, I tried to break down what employees would contribute as well as what the total employer cost would be. Now, just for clarity, this is twelve-month cost of this, of these plans. It is not our year-to-year budget number, if that makes sense to people, because we still have three months in our current budget. Um, so if we move to a plan that costs more, um, w- we will have overruns on, on the health insurance. So, just to make that clear, and then in the following year, um, we'll have three months on, on the other end, to look at, if that makes sense to people. Another question that I received was on deductibles, because our plan runs October to September. However, deductibles are annual. So the employees' deductibles would continue through the end of the year, and the insurance companies would work that out, I'm told. So that wouldn't fall upon the employee, um, to, to deal with that.
So it's up to, the employee can decide if they're going with the Broad or the Focus, or we have to choose as a whole?
So that's up to the council to decide whether or not you're going to allow them to decide. My proposal to you is to do a dual choice. So they could choose if they wanted the Broad network or the Focus, because the Focus would be a cost savings to them, but they may not be able to keep the doctor or the location that they're currently going to under that one. The Broad, it's more likely that they would, although there's no guarantee a hundred percent. I mean, things can change with providers with your own, with, if we stayed with the current one from year to year. But we don't anticipate big changes if, if we were in the Broad as far as having to find new providers. So I, I would suggest, um, offering both to them, because if an employee looks on the Focus and they say, you know, every doctor that I've seen in the last three years is in that group, why do I wanna pay an extra, under the family plan, an extra fifteen dollars a month for that, when I'm already getting that same coverage? Or, I look and I say, oh, my kid's pediatrician isn't in that one, but they're in the Broad, I don't wanna deal with that. I wanna pay the extra fifteen dollars a month and continue that level of care. So it'd be up to the employee to determine where, how much they value that, that potential savings, if they wanna stay in the Broad or, or if they think they get everything that they wanted with the Focus. You could just say, the city is going to provide you Broad, or the city is going to provide you Focus. You don't have to offer it as a dual.
And there's no price difference for us choosing for them?
If you chose Focus, there would be a significant cost savings to the city.
Okay.
But what is the difference between the two options? And maybe that's what you guys can speak to.
Yes, there's a couple of maps in your.
Can I also, did you ever get the answer about the, um, breakdown of, um, what was I gonna say, C H N? Theta Care of the facilities between Theta Care Berlin and then like the Eastridge Clinic? Depending, is it just all Theta Care doctors in Berlin, or is it the different clinics? Remember how I asked about the?
Well, from what I heard, when they ran the, who's using what, um, of, under W P S currently, and if we moved to Robin, correct me if I'm wrong, we saw like a ninety-nine point nine percent were going to have continued coverage under the Broad network. So my assumption would be, if there are people there, then, then that one is included in that coverage.
I only asked because it stated Theta Care Berlin, but it didn't clarify Theta Care Eastridge, which is a different clinic, still Theta Care, but I just wanted to make sure that was clarified.
So, I can probably summarize it, I live in Vonalec, grew up in the area, got grandparents here, you know, or did.
Yeah.
Mark Henshaw with Health Partners, Robin. The, the Broad network has S S M, which is, you know, Ripon, you know, which I know if you pulled from Ripon, that they become important, right? I live in Vonalec, Agnesian's important there, S S M, now they call them. Uh, also going to Oshkosh, you got Ascension, which is gonna be important, um, on the Broad. Those are the two big ones on the Broad that, uh, are not in the Focus. They're the, they're the big ones. Uh, once you go to Focus, you have the Theta Care providers. Um, I mean, we're created by a partnership with Theta Care in Berlin, so, I mean, we're data-driven, you know, in this area. Uh, but you also have Aurora, if you go to Oshkosh, in the Focus network, too. Um, you know, if you happen to go outside the area, we have a wrap with Cigna. Uh, if you go to Madison for something major, we got U W in the system, you know, things like that, Freiter. Um, you know, as you, as you spread out into different, uh, communities in the area and stuff like that. But the biggest piece here, I knew it was a big Theta Care environment. The Select, you know, I, I, we, we talked about it, and I said, maybe the first year, that's a, that's Theta Care only with some A C O partners and stuff like that. You know, maybe you might have a few people that would fit that really well, uh, but maybe not the first. Maybe you look at that maybe as a follow-up year as saying, hey, you know, now you're used to them, you kinda, maybe now we can look at what their utilization is within our system and say, yeah, you got some people that could fit pretty good in that Select network. But right out of the, right out of the gates, I think that probably would be a little too narrow and maybe, you know, too much of a, you know, wait a minute from the employees. Um, so the Broad network, you know, gives you a really good widespread in this market. Uh, even being in Berlin, you know, the Theta Care facilities and the Aurora facilities going to Oshkosh, you know, the Focus network, when we looked at, you know, the top provider reports, uh, I think we got a copy of those, right?
Mm-hmm. I, right, I didn't, I didn't give them the actual.
Okay, perfect.
But it was ninety-nine point nine percent for a location, and I think it was for both in the Broad network. The Focus, it went down to like seventy-five percent for the specific providers.
And that was, and that was based on dollars, you know, where they're spending the money and things like that. And, you know, and that's without tin numbers, which is, you know, tax I D numbers. It's really looking at just the name of the clinics, name of the facilities, things like that. But, yeah, we were very comfortable based on where you're located. But yeah, we were very comfortable based on where you're located to have, you know, pretty good coverage, you know, on on one of those two two opportunities. The other thing I wanted to talk about, I mean, you talked about the deductible. If your deductible runs on a calendar year, which is what I heard, we we do what's called the deductible credit report. So you would come on in October, usually wait about thirty days or so. We get a report from W P S, you know, Visance grabs that, gives it to us and will give credit for, you know, whatever deductible was used up to, you know, October one, and then it starts over in January. That's an industry standard, you know, to do deductible credits when you're off January renewals and stuff like that. The other piece I wanted to talk about is when you look at broad versus focused, you got the premium differentials. But also your contracts are different, right? When you look at retail, you know, and stuff like that. So I always tell people, I go, if you really are using Theta Care Aurora, you don't need Agnesian or, you know, S S M and that. You're you're on a high deductible plan, you're paying retail, right? You know, for your upfront costs, you'll you'll do better in the focus on the contracted rates, you know, on your, you know, actual utilization than you will on the broad. Just because it's a narrower network, they gave us better contracts and better discounts, you know, with those providers. And then, of course, if you go to select, it's even better, right? But that's what I was going to say, if someone is religiously going to Theta Care Aurora, I would say, personally, I would take the, you know, take the focus and make sure you get a better deal on the on the retail pricing, you know, which should be, you know, probably better than what you currently have, you know, on the retail side of it, so.
Is there a downside to us allowing them to choose one or the other? Is there a penalty or extra fees that's? So I personally think that just seems like the.
Especially the first year, depending what works for each individual family.
And and we would, you know, help you guys with open enrollment, come and present to the employees.
Explain to the employees which is.
Educate them, give them links to the different network and say, whatever, whoever your providers are, we can help them look them up and say, let's let's see which one they're in, let's make sure that they, you know, fit the right network that they're looking for. We'll we'll help them find a home.
Can you provide a little kind of how that would work? Because I'm sure people are very nervous with the October one renewal date as to how this would work for in in practice for employees to get everybody switched over to a new plan if that's what the council chose to do.
If we were to make a decision to move forward, we would schedule a employee meeting and the process, there'd be some, we could do that as soon as next week if need be. There would be some things happening behind the scenes, like the employer application, some things like that. But yeah, we'd give them a packet with all things needed, allow that open enrollment period, that time to get those decisions made. Like Mark had mentioned, we'll bring these guys in to help with those employee meetings to be able to answer any questions and put everyone at ease that this is, yes, this is change, but it was change in mind to kind of keep everything, you know, excuse me, keep everything as price-driven as possible to help out with some of the changes that the city is making.
And and the timeframe wise, that's the end of next week, I'm thinking. I work backwards from October one, right?
It's the twelve.
Twelve, okay. So sooner the better, you know, to get cards in their hands. They may, you know, if we can get it done by the fifteenth, we probably can get cards in their hands. If not, it's okay, we can give, you know, I, you know, group numbers and things like that. You'll be enrolled by then, by October one. It might be a few days before, you know, maybe a little late to get cards, but we can work with that. We can get you the information if they have a a meeting or appointment or something, we can get them the information they need. But yeah, sooner the better. I mean, if you approve it tonight, what I would do, Jesse, is, you know, say, let's schedule a virtual meeting later this week. Let's get, you know, the next day or two, let's get the paperwork done. Let's get, what are what are those meetings going to look like? What do you want us to bring as far as information? We have a resource guide that we can print in-house if we have to and bring it for the employees or we can try to get it printed and sent to you. That gives us everything and anything about Health Partners and Robin, you know, as far as resources. It's a really nice piece of material that the employees can take home and give them time to make a decision and then do some research and stuff like that and then come back and, yeah. I don't know what your open enrollment window looks like, but we have time to do it. It's just we gotta be, you know, diligent on process.
Of course, it's me. For the partnership with Cigna, is that just emergency health? Or is that like if you have a student that's in college in a different state, they would have their choice? Covered by Cigna?
Yeah, the Cigna, you know, anytime you got urgent and emergent coverage. But if you're out of state and you got a college kid or something, that's one thing about the focus and the broad that's beneficial over the select. Select, you wouldn't have that, you know. So with the focus and the broad, and we talked about that, we wanted to make sure there those surprises weren't out there. So we have it integrated right into our search engine. So they go to our search engine, put in there, if they're in Florida, I had to do that for a customer the other day. I got a child in Florida and Orlando, what do you got for providers? We entered it in, boom, sent it out to them and said, here's the provider systems that are in network and stuff like that. And Cigna is one of the largest national networks out there, so, which is why we partnered with them.
I'm sorry, did you say you were personally from Robin Health Partners?
Yeah, Mark Henshaw, I'm with Robin Health Partners and this is Stacy Clark.
Did you get a chance to email about the other stuff today?
Yes.
Yes, did you get a response?
Not yet. There was a question about whether or not there would be a willingness to have a increase cap for next year or following the subsequent year.
Yeah, we we got that, we can ask, I think Stacy sent an email, ask underwriting with a group year size. I'm going to be extremely upfront. It's going to be tough to get done, you know, on a group year. Usually over a hundred employees, we usually can, you know, offer second year rate caps. It's tough on a group with with sixty employees or something like that. But we always ask, you know, we're salespeople, we always ask for the moon and see what they come back with. We should get an answer, you know, probably as early as tomorrow on that part of it. But I'm just being upfront, I wouldn't hold my breath on that one, so.
And then also, I guess that's all I really have for them.
There was a question on the pharmacy also?
There was just a question also about if there would be any differences that people would notice between the coverage that we're currently receiving through W P S versus the coverage that we would receive through Robin.
And and you guys are a high deductible plan, so you're really paying retail, it's not a copay, you know, changes where this, you know, that's where we see a lot of adjustments is, oh, I was in a forty dollar copay, now I'm in a sixty, you know. Where if you're in a high deductible, you're playing paying the retail price of the drugs. And that might change from different pharmacies to different pharmacies. Nice thing is we do have an online tool where they can do a price check on all the pharmacies in the area and really do some nice consumerism. And we really help drive or, you know, educate the consumer and say, you know, here's five pharmacy options in your area. You know, this one's cheaper than that one and here's the price, you know, based on your plan. I use the scenario, people don't realize, I said, I, you know, there's three Walgreens in Fond du Lac, right? For the same drug, you could have three different price points. And people are like, really? And I said, each one of them runs under its own profit center. And I said, you could, doesn't mean you will, but you could have three different price points for the same drug because it's based on the volume that that location is driving out the system. You know, I've been in this industry thirty-some years and I was just like, some of the nuances like that are crazy in our industry. And I wonder why, you know, people get frustrated with healthcare, right? But we we try to help give them the tools to to market it. But as far as, you know, what are on their net, I mean, who does W P S use for pharmacy or for administrator? Is it Express Script?
Express Scripts.
Okay, yeah, we, right now, we use Med Impact. We're changing to Express Scripts as of January one, so.
So it'll be a little bit and then it would go back to.
And I thought they were, because I worked at W P S thirty years ago. That really ages me, thanks. But yeah, I I do have, you know, I thought that that's where they were. Now, we control our formularies, you know, on on stuff like that. But, you know, you're going to have very similar discounting, very some, you know, really good programming that way, so.
And it's all one deductible, correct? Prescriptions are included within the total out-of-pocket for individual or family.
Absolutely.
Any other questions? I know we briefly talked, we're okay with October or are we going to January one or what was your?
We have to.
We have to renew for October.
Or employees don't have healthcare for October, November.
So what I was talking about is when our deductibles run. Because that was a question from employees and W is giant spot nude anyways. But I confirmed that even though our insurance contract runs from October to September, our employees deductibles start in January and run through December. So, you know, if they're on a single plan and their deductible's thirty-five hundred and they already met that, or they will meet it in November. I mean, that's that's a big deal to the employees. And what I'm hearing is that they handle that amongst themselves as a as a standard industry thing. And our employees, like, they may need to say, you know, hey, I've already met my deductible, but it should all pan out in the end. They shouldn't have any extra costs for.
When we do the employee meetings, we help the employees and say, if you already met it, let's not wait for our, you know, our report to get to us because you may have a medication October one. We always tell them, grab your last E O B, show us that you already met it and we can manually enter it into our system to show that, you know, right away it's done. It's for the ones that, I don't know where I'm at, I don't know what mine looks like. We'll we'll get a report or Visance will request a report from W P S about thirty to forty-five days after the effective date. They'll send us that report and then we'll put it in our system as a, you know, as a credit.
So if anybody paid more than they should have, it'll come back to them.
Yep, yep. Sometimes that happens with the pharmacy especially, you know, yeah.
That's common, that thirty to forty-five day window, just to allow any anything that was out there. Yeah, to be processed and be part of that deductible. So if we request it right away, there might be a claim that was missed.
Also, I want to, I know we, there was some concern with staff about cost. I don't know if you have that, what we looked at earlier, the P D stuff. That there was concern about trying to keep prices and costs similar to what the P D has. And we we knew that going forward from last year, that this was going to be probably a hot topic as far as percentage. And even when we were doing negotiations, all that stuff, that this would possibly come into play. But with doing this, it would be pretty, pretty similar to what the P D, just that everybody's on the same playing field.
Right, so when those sheets that you got from Visance, Visance, sorry, Visance compares the different plans, it's showing a lot of those numbers as and the premium, the employer and the employee. And so they're assuming a ninety-two and a half percent employer contribution and a seven and a half employee contribution, which is something that I need the council to provide guidance on. I asked them to run it that way and that's the way I prepared my spreadsheets because the labor contract that we have with the police department, as of January one, the police department will pay seven and a half percent with a max of a hundred and fifty dollars a month. So if they chose the focused, they wouldn't, they wouldn't.
Save a few bucks.
And and there would be no additional need to contribute. However, if they chose the broad network, if we move forward with this at that rate, I mean, do about ten dollars a month per employee, there's potentially up to six, so a hundred and twenty dollars times six, which, you know, my total costs and stuff in here include some of those types of things. And that can fluctuate because somebody could have a child and all of a sudden on family or they could get divorced and now all of a sudden they're single. I mean, those types of things fluctuate. So these numbers are based on what our current employee usage is for number on single number, on family number, on employee plus one, I'll call it. So, but we don't obviously have a crystal ball for that, but we're doing the best estimate that we can.
But we also tried to keep it, knowing where the P D was at, we tried to keep it as as similar as we could.
Oh, right, so what I propose to you is what the what the that labor contract proposed. Couple of other nuances for us, for me to make sure is clear to you. While our contract runs October to September, our budget runs January to December. So I think I mentioned, you know, on the back end, it it'll be a little bit potential more in the last three months of the year than it is what's shown here. But I'd also suggest that if we move forward with the Robin proposal, those costs are very similar, anticipated to be very similar to what we budgeted for for this year. So we, the council could determine to wait until January one to implement the cost share with employees to give, potentially give people a little time to absorb that and understand instead of as of October one, saying, okay, now we're going to, you know, change your paycheck and all of those types of things, right? Whereas if we choose to go with W P S, I don't have a plan to make up that difference at the moment. So the council would have to determine, and we have to determine anyway, whether or not you want to implement that seven and a half percent with the October one bill or wait until the January one. I mean, honestly, it's up to the council, you don't have to move to the ninety-two, five, seven and a half percent share. But I guess I kind of thought, since that's what was approved in the police contract, that that was kind of where the council was headed. You you can tell me that you want the the share to be different than that. It won't change the total amount that we owe to Robin, but it would change the amount that we need to budget as an employer versus the amount that would come from the employees, if that makes sense.
Any other questions? Would anybody like to make a motion?
And just to clarify, I'm hoping you will tell me, make a recommendation to the council as to the employer employee contribution levels and which plan, W P S, or Robin Broad or Robin Focus or a combination thereof that you would like to move forward with.
I can't.
I'll make a motion to recommend to common council to move forward with the Robin Health Partners proposal for employee health insurance for the October one twenty-five to September thirty, twenty twenty-six plan year, including an option for both the broad network plan and focus network plan with a thirty-five hundred, seven thousand dollar and one hundred percent deductible. Total plan costs to be shared by the employer at ninety-two point five percent and employee at seven and a half percent of the employee chosen plan, employee to select broad or focus network and single employee plus spouse or employee plus children or family plan.
And is the council comfortable moving forward with the implementation of the employee contribution with the January one with the budget change versus the contract change?
I would say if it's in the budget, yes, but I can't vote on this.
Did I did I phrase that okay? Because I can try to re-explain what I meant by that.
I think as long as you're comfortable with it, like, you know it works, yeah, like, if it works the way like that, I think it would be fine.
So we had a motion by Victoria.
Second.
Second by Missy, and can have a roll call vote, please.
Do we need to amend it or after? I don't know if that's.
Not as part of the contract. I'm just looking for what we would do, and and I can, you officially do it next week when, you know, we get this cleaned up for you. So I can ask you again to make that part of the motion. I was just looking for clarity to make sure, knew where we were at, how people were feeling about that.
Sorensen.
Aye.
Stubby.
Upstain.
Boike.
Aye.
Hill.
Aye.
Nagbers, absent. Prisbo.
Aye.
Good.
Yep.
Okay, motion passes or send it in on the common council?
Yep, sending it to common council for their.
Thank you, guys.
Vote next to you. Oh, absolutely.
I sit on our local school board, I like how fast yours goes.
I I try my my darndest up here. That was fast, oh, okay. I'm also on school board, so I appreciate a a quick, to-the-point meeting.
It can be four or five hours long, it's like.
Did we?
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Did we want to discuss the Delta dental piece or?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Cause I did not make a motion on that because we didn't talk about it.
Well, if, yes, does anybody have any questions regarding the dental? I'm sorry, you were absolutely right. We should decide.
Well, I only had a question as it regards, shoot, let me jump back to that page. Sorry. Here we go. The coverage between health partners and the recommended renewal with Delta Dental seems like a significant savings with health partners.
It has an effect on the city. And it would have a deficit to an employee by going with the other one. And it's all in forty portions.
What deficit are you seeing?
The amount you get paid out for things versus.
Well, I looked at that and as someone who's put four kids through orthodontia, I guarantee you that thousand dollar cap seventy percent, fifty percent is a joke. It costs about six to eight grand to put orthodontia on a kid. So whether you're paying five hundred or three hundred dollars literally doesn't matter. Like, it doesn't really dent the dental cost of orthodontia. That's why I'm like, if we're, if all we're talking about is a fifty percent of a thousand or seventy percent of a thousand.
So, so that's actually fifty percent up to a thousand. So on, on the health partners, once you hit two thousand, you cap at a thousand dollars out of pocket. And on Deltas, you'd have to, you know, you could just get there quicker. So you get a thousand total in both situations.
Okay.
It's just how fast do you get to that thousand? And you're right, I had four kids go through orthodontia too. I could have bought a nice car with that.
Same.
Seven, you know, one, one was ninety-six hundred and the other ones were six to seven, usually around seven thousand bucks.
Right.
For the other three.
I did notice though that why is endodontics and periodontics in green over on the health partners?
It's a benefit that doesn't, isn't included in the.
Is not included, okay.
Yeah. The, you know, and I'm, I'm going to be completely upfront. The only thing I would want to do, which I think I would like to take one step further is if you could find out what dentists people are using and make sure that we have coverage on the network. Otherwise, we do have out of network benefits and stuff like that. But I just want to caution and I want to make sure that, because we don't have that with the Delta piece that we had with the W P S. But if you can survey or talk to your, you know, I don't know the dentist in this area and say, you know, can you look up these dentists? Usually they're the mom and pop dentists that everybody goes to and.
So one of, one of the main ones just dropped Delta. And so there's only other, one other one in town that does accept Delta?
Oh, really?
Some will even have, is it?
So.
It's Fox, is it?
Hillside Dental?
Hillside accepts Delta, but Fox River Dental Street does not.
Fox River?
And then Bright Orthodontics is who I think most of them go through.
Right.
Bright Orthodontics.
B R I.
G H T.
And where are they out of?
Berlin, Ripon and Oshkosh.
Okay. And Fox River.
Is that a report that we could ask for from Delta?
I don't know if they'll give something like that, but uh, she asked if that's a report, a top provider report for Delta. I'm not sure if they.
They're not usually giving. We can try. We've had better luck, to Mark's point, trying to take a survey on who and where. So just, just a thought, right? So if there is a significant savings, I understand that medical is a little different, it's a little more intimate. Dental, sometimes people are willing to change if it does cost their pocket, or hit their pocketbook. There could certainly be some disruption with this. Mark and I talked about it. Jesse and I kind of talked about it. We thought with all the change that was going on, that maybe it made sense to stay the course with Delta Dental. Something also to mention that there, there would be some additional savings with the medical if that did happen.
Do, do you know how many are on the plan? Are there more than five? There's usually on a voluntary minimum participation in that?
Twenty, thirty.
Thirty on the plan? Oh, I didn't see that.
Yeah.
All right. So there's good amount. I, that's why I want to make sure we do it right and just make.
Silver Creek would also be on your list, probably. Silver Creek.
And Ripon.
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 I know they take.
Well, or Delta, yeah.
Yeah, and I just wanted to be completely, you know, I, it looks good on paper, but if we don't have anybody in the network that everybody's using, then you're going to have a lot of unhappy people. And I don't want to start the relationship that way.
You mentioned a cost savings for which dental plan to be paired with the medical plan?
No, for health partners. If you go with the health partners medical and you add dental, we have a discount on the medical to part, to add dental to it.
Okay. So do we want to wait to hear about surveying the local orthodontists before we make a decision on this? Yeah. Next week.
When is our renewal with dental?
It, it's, it's the same. It's ten one.
It is ten one.
So can we just have that for next meeting and just waive the discussion of committee of the whole on that one?
I, I would think that's fine. So how do we, so you guys are just going to look and see if the ones that we mentioned here are within your current plan or not? Okay.
Yeah.
And kind of give an idea.
If you want to just talk to, you know, the hallways, you know, the bubbler, you know, or if you're in other parts of the country, water fountain. But, you know, just talk to people and say, you know, who do you use? And then we can kind of do a, a search in this area and, and then give you a, you know, here's, if we don't have those, here are the ones we have. Are they acceptable or not? But I just want, our network's not as strong. We use Cigna as our network for dental. And I just want to make sure, I'm not familiar with their network in this location. And I just want to make sure that they're strong enough so your employees are happy with it. So.
The only other question I have is if you're looking at this sheet of paper.
Okay.
In the second box, I don't know what negative fee schedule versus U C R eighty percent means. That's the only other real big difference I see.
And I'll let Jeff explain the negative fees schedule if he can, because I'm not, sorry to put you on that spot. I do, usual and custom, U C R is usual and customary. So how usual and customary works is they take a average of that area and they pay at an eighty percent of the average, usual and customary. And, and that's, that's standard, you know, eighty, sometimes you see ninety. You know, I was talking, you know, maybe we could bump that up. It would cost more, obviously, but usually going out to, it's seventy-five, eighty percent, most carriers do. Negative fee schedule, I was on the broker's side for thirty years, so I probably can answer it a little bit on that. I know how Delta Dental works. I've had them my whole life until recently. I have friends that are dentists. They usually send out, the dentist, what they do is they send a, their prices to Delta Dental and say, here's our fee schedule, right? And Delta says yay or nay. And if they say nay, you got to lower them. And then you keep trying to figure out where they need to be, you know, for a fee schedule, which is probably why some of the dentists stopped taking them, right? My old dentist doesn't take them anymore either. And it was one of those situations where he's like, yeah, I just can't do business that way anymore. You know, so they're the largest one in the state and they're extreme. I've had them a long time. They're really good at, at, you know, coverage, but the dentists don't always like them either on that other side of it. But, so that's what we're at, you know. But dentists have full books. They don't participate in a lot of networks unless they're the big corporate, like the dental associates and stuff like that, just because they don't have to, you know. It's one of those situations where it's kind of like, I'm busy enough, you know, so. But I just want to do our due diligence, make sure that we, you know, have coverage for you. So.
Good.
And, and the good thing is, if you make that decision in a couple of weeks, that's, medical's more important, right? To get things up and running and get them in the system and stuff like that. Not only we, you know, we have a little more flexibility on, you know, there's just less of it. And we'd probably have to do some enrollment, you know, meetings because people that are, it's voluntary, so they want to be able to sign up if they need to. So.
Well, and if you're able, if we're able to get that stuff by next week, I, I have a good feeling we could.
We could probably make that decision next week too.
Yeah.
Oh, okay. Yeah, I mean, if you, if you get us some names and stuff, I mean, we'll look at that up tomorrow even. And if you got, we could have answers to, on, Stacy will do a search tomorrow on, you know.
She's probably halfway there, isn't she?
She's extremely good on the computer and those types of searches. You're probably right. She probably has it in her hands right now. But yeah, we, we can get that to you fairly quick.
Okay.
You know, I'm turning around. You got them already, don't you?
Yeah, I didn't, I did not see anything here in Berlin. The most close would be Ripon or Oshkosh. Like, um, I found like west.
I was just, so one of the questions, Hillside shows Berlin, but their office is in Ripon? And I know a lot of their stuff goes through Ripon, so does Hillside and Ripon?
Where they bill it.
Yeah.
Well, well.
So that's one of the major ones if we're looking at our local ones.
Fox River doesn't take Delta anymore.
Yeah, Fox River doesn't take it anyways, so.
Okay.
Between Hillside and.
We'll send it over to you.
We'll figure that out next week then.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you, guys.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to number seven, the creation and posting of senior center and recreation facility direction director position. Recommendation is discussion and action is appropriate.
So as you're aware, our current park and recreation director position is vacant. That position reports or is staffed to, to different committees, the park and recreation commission, as well as the committee on aging. Both of those committees discussed the proposed job description and what their thoughts were as far as whether or not it could be part-time or should maintain as a full-time position as well as the title of the position. So as you know, that position currently is titled park and recreation director. I think there's been a bit of confusion in the community as to what the roles and responsibilities of that position is because comparative to other communities that have a park and recreation director, I mean, communities can call all different positions, whatever makes sense in their community. But I think more people would visualize somebody who takes care of recreational programming, you know, like setting up Little League and, and those types of, of things, I think is what most people envision. And we don't have those programs here in the city. So I, I would like to, as, as part of hiring a, a new person, change the title to more accurately reflect to the community what this person's roles and responsibilities are. So this person primarily takes care of the senior center and there are several programs at the senior center. There's the nutrition program and there's the transportation program and all kinds of wonderful things at the senior center. And then they also take care of facilities as far as usage, like rental of those facilities. So they're not the, like our, our park director takes care of the physical, you know, maintenance and all of those types of things. But for instance, if you wanted to rent a park pavilion for your family reunion, you would go through the park and rec director at the senior center to, to get that going. Or if you wish to have a campsite at the campground or utilize the ball diamonds, all of those facilities or recreational facilities that the public can, can utilize and rent, that coordination goes through this position. So that's why I've proposed calling it the senior center and recreation facilities coordinator. But both committees felt strongly that this should be a director position and I can completely respect that. So as presented to you, it is senior center and recreation facilities director position. So hopefully that'll provide a little more clarity to, to the community as to whom they need to contact for certain things. Both committees, I think strongly recommended that the position maintain its full-time status. And I think that's because they want to make sure that the seniors are well represented and well represented and that there is an opportunity for growth and programming at that facility. So that's kind of the, the background that, that I received from those committees.
What kind of, do you need a motion to move forward with the posted position or what are you looking for from us?
Right. I'm just looking for clarification that you are comfortable with these changes. And then if you are comfortable with it, then I'm going to go ahead and get this in, out to the paper and post it on our website so that we can hopefully start getting some applications from some people who are excited to lead the senior center and help people utilize our recreational facilities. It's been vacant for a little bit and I think it was important that we really review this because there's, you know, maybe some other opportunities within this position if something different were to happen with the pool or anything like that. We could certainly review this again, but in the future potentially.
So you're hoping to have deadline of September twenty-sixth and then interviews that next week? So I, I mean, really in hindsight, we could have somebody in there hopefully beginning of October?
That would be amazing. But of course, it depends on where they're coming from. You know, if they are currently sitting at home revved and have all of the, you know, experience and knowledge they need and could, great. It could be that they have to give a two-week notice, a thirty-day notice. I mean, I, I don't know. And it will certainly depend on the applicants that we get and their availability. But of course, the, the sooner the better. Our assistant director, she's a different title. The titles are very confusing over there. But has been doing an amazing job picking up, you know, the slack over there and keeping the facility running. They did have to adjust the hours, as you're aware, because Jill has limited hours. She's not a full-time employee. So the sooner that we can get somebody in there and give Jill some relief, so maybe she could, you know, go to an appointment or something that she might need to do at some point, as, as well as start working on enhancing the programs and offerings at the senior center, the better. But we certainly want to make sure that we get the right individual in there.
Well, I think you got the most important feedback being from park and rec and from committee on aging. And that their feedback was probably more applicable to what's needed. And I like the write-up here. It seems very concise. So I'm totally comfortable with the way that it's written up and the titling. And. It looks good, but do you want an official motion or are you just good to go? Cause I think we need to get this rolling.
If you want to get a motion so that it's in the minutes, that's great. Then, you know, in the future, when they go, oh, when did they decide this? It'll be a little clearer.
So I'll make a motion that we move forward with the posting of the attached position description as a full-time benefited salary.
Yeah. Yeah.
I'll second.
Motion in a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. One step closer, Jill. We're, we're getting. Onto number eight is approval of city of Berlin EMS policies and procedures and the recommendation is to, is discussion and action as appropriate.
So I'm going to turn this over to your EMS director, Evan Banden Langenberg.
I'm so glad you got to say that.
It's not too bad.
Evan B, step up to the podium.
So this was just something that I, I think we needed to do. Our last EMS policies and procedures are from when we were still volunteer. So this is just bringing it up into more of a full-time status. This is kind of a combination between our old policies and procedures where some were phased out. I also got both Marquette counties and Washtere counties and then just kind of combined them and, and figured out what would work for us. So there's nothing really that earth-shattering that I think, but if you guys took a look, if you have any questions.
Is there anything you'd like to highlight from this book that is a significant change or difference?
I mean, really, the whole book is a change from what we have. Because it, it really dives into like response times, our, our response times on our typical policies right now is technically a ten-minute response time, which still from volunteer coming from home. As now we have a three-minute response time to be out the door because we're full-time staffed and, and able to do that. So that's kind of one of the big changes, just kind of accountability and, and some legal stuff like, you know, what you should be wearing in the station. So not that we've had a problem, but you know, just trying to head some stuff off in the past, both Washtere and Marquette had it. So I was like, you know, I didn't know that had to be stated, but it's probably not a bad thing to be stated. So it's on the books, but so that, that kind of stuff. But there's nothing really too exciting, I don't think.
I'm coming from a, pardon me, I'm coming from a military background and I, I apologize that I didn't read the entire packet. But can you tell me if there's any physical fitness guidelines for EMS workers?
No, the, the physical fitness guideline still kind of goes back to our, our city handbook, which is be able to lift, bend, twist, lift fifty pounds. I have to read it verbatim, but that, some of our, this really kind of focuses more on top of what that was. So a lot of stuff in this book also refers back to our city handbook, because I didn't want to rewrite stuff that we. because I didn't want to rewrite stuff that we already have written down. And I didn't want to change any policy that's already in the city.
Any other questions for Evan?
I'll make a motion to recommend to the common council approval of the EMS policies as presented.
I'll second.
Motion in a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And that's to send to common council? Or that's, okay, thanks. Thanks, Evan. All right, and then I will look for number nine, which is a motion to convene into closed session pursuant to Wisconsin Statute 19.851E, deliberating or negotiating the purchase of public properties, the investing in public funds, or conducting other specified public business whenever competitive bargaining reasons require a closed session. The purchase of 169 Ripon Road.
I'll make a motion to go to closed session.
I'll second that. Motion in a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? In a closed session, then?
I would request the seating of Evan Vanden Langenberg as.
Goodbye, meter maid.
As our EMS director.
I said goodbye, Mrs. Meter Maid.
I need a name tag.
We can seat him after we shut off.
Sam, I'm really tired, and if you want to drink coffee before coming here.
We have a second.
Because then I'm like, I'm not going to go to sleep then.
Did you get the time? All right, so I just have to do the, go back in.
It says, take appropriate action as a result of closed session. Hi, kiddos. Have a good rest of your night, hope it's good, Joe.
Yeah, you too.
Good day.
Oh, God.
That's how I like it, it's bedtime, 4:00 AM, I'm so early. 2:20 is when I get up.
2:20.
That's when I, do you work at Alliance?
Oh, yeah.
That's when my brother like gets up.
I just get up and go to the gym.
Well, I mean, I get up and do yoga. Normally I get up at 3, but I started doing yoga again, so I get up at 2:20, take care of the, 2:30, I'm on the floor, doing yoga. But I go in at 4:30.
Yeah. But then you're done at like 2.
No.
No?
I'm a team lead, so I, I'm there a little longer.
My husband's there, but he's there.
But no one's there, like now.
Were these turned off?
You would be the only one to turn it off, but true now, so no.
We don't have anything to talk about.